There we go.
I'd like to call a meeting to honor and ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sorel, here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Lam.
Here.
Councilor Heinz.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Here.
Councilor Marconi.
Present.
Councilor St. Laurent.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer and then Councilor Hare Whitehouse will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by God Bless America.
Now, councilors, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the Constitution, our Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, all in this land of America.
I guess we just did it.
I'd like a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of seven thirty.
So move your honor.
Two seconds. Three. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? We're down to the public comment session and we have -- it's three minutes as you all know. We have five speakers -- no, we don't. We have four speakers and the way this works is when your three minutes is up, our city attorney pulls up the card and when you see this "Thank You," please sit down. The first one on the list is Jane Fordy and she's going to speak about the Music Hall's 125th anniversary. Welcome. We're all dressed up tonight.
Madam Mayor, city councilors, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jane Ford. I am the artistic director of the Music Hall and I've come to invite you all to a birthday party, 125th birthday party. It is a testament to this community and this city that in our midst we have the oldest theater in New Hampshire, the 14th oldest working theater in the United States, the Grand Opera House, the Music Hall. On October the 4th and 5th, we will celebrate our 125th anniversary jubilee. The city has granted us permission to close Chestnut Street on October the 4th and we will transport you back. The street will ring again with the sounds of flower sellers, street urchins, horse and carriage, gentry and townsfolk of 1878. Dorman will usher you into our beautiful theater where our staff and friends in Victorian splendor will escort you up to the lobby where you can partake in Victorian libations and sweetneats, all to the strains of the harpsichord and Victorian parlor music. As you take your seats, the curtain will rise as it did 125 years ago on the two plays, Cast and John Watt, the original plays that opened the Music Hall will once again grace the beautiful stage of the Music Hall. And so I invite our community who has saved and supported this treasure for 125 years to come and celebrate and help us to continue the legacy for the next 125 years. The street promenade on October the 4th from 6:00 to 8:00 is free. Come play with us, go back 125 years. For tickets for the anniversary jubilee performance at 8:00 on the 4th of October and 2:00 p.m. on the 5th of October, please visit our box office at 603-436-2400 or visit us online, This Sunday, the 28th of September, from between 4:00 and 7:00, we have -- we are free and open to the public for our historic tours and our exhibition of the Music Hall in pictures of 125 years. You may spot yourself in these pictures. Please come along, bring your friends, and help us to celebrate. I hope each and every one of you will join us to celebrate the Music Hall's birthday. I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Before we go on with our speakers, I neglectfully forgot to introduce Ted Jankowski, our deputy sitting manager. He'll be sitting in for John O'Hinco tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're quite welcome, yes. Now, we're down to the next speaker and that's Charlton Dobson and he's going to speak Charlton, I'm sorry, on taxes.
Mayor Sorel, this is Charlton Dobson, councilor. First of all, I have a few questions here. What would the city of Portsmouth, what is your plans and what are your plans on taxes after we stop becoming a donor city?
I'll start you right now. This is a public comment session for you to tell us what you want. It isn't a question and answer. I would suggest that you send a letter to either Ted or John O'Hinco.
Yes, Sorel, I understand that. First of all, I would like to say I think that the city of Portsmouth needs to lower its taxes, okay? For one, I would like to say that we have -- we charge too much, all right? I'm letting you know that, okay? Two, I want to know what your decision was on the MLK Street? Was that your board or the planning board that made the final decision?
It was referred back to the planning, but we just can't do a question in the absentee year.
And I understand that. Have you received any information back on that?
No, I'm saying --
I --
I'm saying again to you, ask your questions, submit a letter to the city manager and he will answer them for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
This is strictly for the people out here. It's a public comment.
I understand that, Mayor Sorel.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne Ecker, City Business.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you're all fine tonight. I'm well and I hope you're all happy. Mr. Ecker, 422 Banfield Road. This is my understanding that the city is getting the federal building. How about that? Taxpayers of this country have given us the federal building. Right, Mr. Hanson? Wouldn't it be nice if the library was put in the federal building, Mr. Heinz? Oh, no, too easy. Can't do that. Have to cost us taxpayers money, right? Mrs. Grasso. Oh, yes, have to tear that building down for millions and then spend millions more to build it back up. Right, Mrs. Panalakis? Just think all that money that could be spent for fixing these streets in this town. We're fixing some of the streets, we're doing some of the sewer, we're doing some of the water. We got a lot of streets that are really tough condition and you're going to spend seven, eight, nine, 10 million dollars for a library, I would think that that would be put into our structure of our city. Then you're going to go to work and take the federal building, so I've heard, tear that sucker down. It costs what, 25, 30 million dollars plus the property? So then you're going to build another building there? You've already -- if you take the federal building over, you can fit a library in one story, two -- one floor, two floors, three floors, or what the devil ever you want to do. It's got elevators, it's got sprinkler systems, and some crap's come out about that it's hazardous to people's health. Well, if it's hazardous to people's health, I would think that everybody that's worked there and has been would have a class action suit and sue the federal government. Something about asbestos. I talked to an engineer and the only reason that you're going to get asbestos things from asbestos is if you disturb them. So if you leave the building alone, you're not going to get hurt. And this is an engineer, that is an engineer. What a shame to tear down another brick building, right? Right. You know, my dear old grandmother, if she was here, she's an old German leader, she'd say, why don't you get a bunch of fling throwers and just take fling throws these buildings? Costs us a lot less to do that. That's what she'd have said. I was down to Leary Field there, so I haven't been there for quite a while since I got out of softball, football, and all that with the kids. I was down there last weekend and I looked at all building over. I would suggest that you people go down there and you people that don't know anything about construction, I don't think any of you do really know anything about construction, I would suggest that you go down there and you take a look at that building and see how straight that sucker is and take a look at the roof and see how straight that is. It's not falling down, it's not coming down, it shouldn't be tearing down, torn down. It's just, it's a sin for you five people up there to want to tear that down. Now, you've got a chance right now to put the library over in a building and you can save that structure. My wife ran a lot of programs out of the JFK years ago and that's why I was there this weekend watching some kids play. There's no reason to tear that building down and spend money. Put the money someplace else. You've got an ideal opportunity. I understand, you're getting the federal building, correct? Is that correct or am I wrong? You're not going to answer me, are you?
Well, we don't like to turn this into a --
Thank you very much.
-- answer, period. The next and last speaker is Peter Brasciano, the parking garage.
It's going to be tough for me to follow that one.
(laughing).
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members and staff. I just happened to glance at the book here and saw a letter from Peter Henderson regarding the new parking garage on Worth -- what is it, Worth Place or Worth, whatever? And I was wondering this week if, and I don't see him here in the audience tonight, Adolf Baranski, never received a reply to the questions he asked last city council meeting as to the parking lot and the parking garage and deliveries, so forth and so on. And if I were to guess, I would have to guess that he never did receive a reply to his questions. So you're all going to have a work session. The residents of Portsmouth out there know very, very little about this new parking garage and I think that's a shame. Why a parking garage? You know, we talk about public transportation and you can look at public transportation out there, the peas run. I still see only two guys on it when I pass them, two people on an entire bus. I kind of wonder, and I kind of agree with this letter, and I kind of wonder, what's the parking lot, parking garage? What's the new parking garage for? Is it for the residents of Portsmouth? Is it for those visionaries that talk about a parallel street to Islington so that we can get more people down into downtown? You're all residents. Is that street going to, that new parallel street going to be a benefit to you? I'll bet it's a benefit to somebody else besides you and they're probably not residents of Portsmouth. So why are we going to the parking garages when we should have satellite parking and bring the people into town via public transportation? Oh, because nobody rides public transportation. Why? Because we built them a new parking garage. We give them a place to park. Well, I don't think we need to. I think we need to use public transportation. I think we need to use the satellite parking sites and they can get into the downtown via public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That ends the public comment session. Now we're down to a public hearing and we have two on for tonight. The first one is notice hereby given, ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, no parking, Partridge Street, both sides, entire length of the street. Did you want to speak on that, Assistant Mayor?
Can Madam Mayor or the PAC, the Parking and Transportation Director has, is here in attendance?
Why don't you come down, John, and kind of explain to the people here and at home just what this is going to entail?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city councils. This came directly from a request from a resident that has, in terms of doing commercial business down to the market down there at the end, and there was a difficulty in getting the commercial vehicles down that street. If even a passenger car parks along the road, there's several fences, most of the houses have driveways, but there's several fences, cars next to that fence, they've been having difficulty getting through and had to lay on the horn early in the morning, call the police department. So traffic safety went down, the onsite review had the police deputy chief and the fire chief and they reviewed the situation and the feeling was that it should indeed be no parking either side.
Thank you, John, very much. I'm going to open this up for speakers far against our simply two, but I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the letter that we did receive.
Dear Mayor Sorel, I will be out of town during tonight's city council meeting and would like to voice a concern relative to the establishment of no parking ordinance on Partridge Street. If the narrowness of the street and the question of emergency vehicles passing is a legitimate concern for Partridge Street, then certainly it should be a concern for the nearby streets of similar width such as Prey Street, Holmes Court, and Gate Street, just to name a few, as well as any other narrow streets in our city. So I ask to ensure that all residents of such streets are provided ready access to emergency vehicles. I recommend that this process be standardized with a minimum width that determines the feasibility of on-street parking rather than leaving it to the more nepotistic method we now have in place. This would ensure that the safety of all residents is the first and foremost concern. Sincerely, Michelle McLaughlin.
Thank you, Kelly.
Can you give her address?
Her address is 469 Marcy Street.
Do I have any first time speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time, do I have any speakers before I close this public hearing? Close. We're down to ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 9, Section 7, Period 901, penalty. Now, would you like to talk about that, Ted?
Actually, once again, I got to call on John Burke, our transportation --
Okay, very good.
-- person to talk about the need to raise these penalties and the fact that this is a statutory process governed by state law and it goes through the process of coming before the city council.
Okay, the commercial loading zones, if you remember, we just implemented over a dozen truck loading zones, commercial loading zones downtown and they've really taken the pinch off of the double parking, not to say that it's completely gone away, but at least we're providing a way for commercial deliveries. The one thing that we did notice in doing this is that the existing violation of $10 is such that, you know, when a passenger car does in fact get a violation in that zone, they find that it might be an opportunity to just stay there the rest of the day since they already get their $10 fine and we can't give them multiple. So what we did is we did look around at some other communities and we found that we are in fact at the lowest of any community that we researched. We looked at 15 communities and most of them were $25 or higher, so we have comparable size, so we're recommending that we go to that to help us with enforcement.
Thank you, John. We're ready to open up the public hearing far against our simply two. Do I have any first time speakers? Please come forward. Second time around, do I have any speakers? Third and final time before I close the public hearing, do I have any speakers? Nobody wants to talk to me. Close. We're down to consideration of resolutions and ordinances. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 11, Section 7, Period 1100, speed limits by the addition of Simmons Road, Suzanne Drive, and Wallace Road, 20 miles per hour. Would you wish, councilors?
Your Honor?
Yes. Councilor Grasso.
I move that we pass this first reading of the amended ordinance as submitted and schedule a public hearing and a second reading at our October 6th city council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? We all ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, no parking, Partridge Street, both sides, the entire length of the street. Somebody want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, move to pass second reading of the amended ordinance as submitted and schedule third and final reading at the October 6th city council meeting. Second.
Discussion? Yes. Councilor Whitehouse and then Councilor Lam.
Yes, Your Honor. I hope that letter from Ms. McLaughlin goes to the traffic and safety in reference to other streets such as Salt, Holmes's Court, Prey. She makes a lot of sense in what she says to say.
We'll make sure it does.
Yes, Your Honor. I think Michelle McLaughlin raises some good points and between now and the final reading, I'll talk to John Burke and look into those things as well. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Now we're down to the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 9, Section 7, Period 901, penalty. And I'm going to pass this to Councilor St. Laurent because she was on the speed committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We move to pass second reading of amended ordinances as submitted and schedule a third and final reading at the October 6th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, as I look at this, just to clarify, we are only raising two items and putting in two new items so that although the whole ordinance is here, there's just a matter of four items that we're altering tonight.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Period 202, location by rezoning by subdivision lot from the single resident B district to the municipal district.
Move third and final reading. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Period 203, interpretation of district bounds by the addition of the following language, any property owners by the city of Portsmouth and not shown on the zoning app as amended is deemed to be in the municipal district.
Move to third and final reading. Second.
Discussion? Councilor Marconi?
Just a question, Your Honor. Does that include unnamed streets or is that just a lot?
Bob?
Ted, if the property was in fact owned by the city and some of the streets are on, some of the streets are not, it would be included in the municipal district. So the streets which the city owns are now zoned municipal as this passed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Whitehouse?
I think my question has been answered. This refers to citywide, not just the property that was sold at auction at Shevin Road.
Yes, that's correct. Basically, item D2 and D3 are to ensure that if we don't have to go through the process again if the city purchases property, it would then automatically be zoned municipal.
Any other? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Period 202, location by the addition of the following language pursuant to Article 2, Section 10, Period 203, parentheses, 7, of the 1995 zoning ordinance, as amended, all city-owned land not shown in the municipal or natural resource protection district shall be deemed to be in the municipal district and when so identified shall be placed in that district.
Move to pass third and final reading. Second.
Discussion? Councilor Whitehouse?
So there are other locations throughout the city that this would affect.
Yes, that's true.
I wish we had a map in front of us that will show us where this would take effect and where would this ordinance, if it passes, where it would affect us, on what property and where.
I don't have the specific information, councilor, but I know that when we went through this process just a couple of years ago to clean up, I think just last year, to clean up a couple of parcels that were not municipally zoned, we had to go through the three reading process to change those. This would basically assure that there are not any properties that are not owned by the municipality that are not municipally zoned, but I think there are very, very few.
One more question. The JFK Center, a site that this building is on, is that zoned municipal?
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion, John?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a good housekeeping measure that has found the time and I think it would be very beneficial to the administration as we move on from here.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Councilor Grasso?
Yes, Your Honor. Just occasionally from time to time, the city receives small parts of land for one reason or another from different people, so that I think this would just automatically have that land become municipal and we don't go through the whole three readings and such.
All right. All ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Now we're down to presentations and consideration of written communications and petitions. A letter from David Cohen, Portsmouth Halloween Parade Committee, requesting permission to hold the ninth annual Halloween Parade on Friday, October 31st, 2003, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Move the city manager with power. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? A letter from Christine Clifford Selma, Systic Fibrosis Foundation, requesting permission to hold the Great Strife 5K Walk on Saturday, May 15th, 2004.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move the city manager with power.
Second.
Discussion? Hare?
Just following the map, the streets that the walk will take place on, I think they're missing one street. As we go down towards the end of the name of streets, it says, we turn left on Daniel Street and we straight through Market Square, then left onto Middle. I'll picture this, we're going up Middle and then all of a sudden we go left on South. I mean, we've got to go up Miller Avenue before we take a left on South and that was left out. Yes, then observe it, that's all.
Very good. Councilor St. Laurent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not that I have any problem with this, but I'm just wondering, is it the purview of the city council, that's an outgoing city council, to grant things that are a year from now for a new city council? I mean, is that something that's okay to be --
Laura?
Yes, John.
The future council? That's okay to --
I feel her.[1719.68][1719.68](laughing).
Are we all ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Request for sidewalk obstruction license, A-hence treasures, one A-frame sign. Would you wish, councilor?
Move the city manager with power. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
If I could just say, Your Honor, I really have appreciated the photos of the A-frames, where they are to be situated, and then they're in living color and it's so easy to identify instead of having to go down street to see where they are. I really appreciate those.
That's the code enforcement officer, Jason, and he does the beauty.
He does a marvelous job, Jason does.
Okay, we all ready for the vote? All in -- no, we already took it anyway. We can. Okay. We're on to the next one. I'm with it tonight. A letter from Paul Sawley, Portsmouth Gaslight Company, requesting that the city institute an electronic processing of payments.
Move to the city manager for report back. Second.
Yes, Councilor Marconi.
What is the percentage charged for electronic What is the percentage charged for electronic payments? Is it two percent?
Uh, Ted?
We'll provide some of that information back and a report back.
Okay.
One of the key issues in this area has been the, the two percent surcharge?
Yeah.
That is charged. Um, if we collect almost fifty million dollars in property taxes, theoretically, two percent would be million dollars lost in fees.
That's what I wanted the listening audience to hear. Thank you.
Yes, and that's one of the main reasons. We are, we'll get them reports, like this is something we've been on top of, we've been looking at it, some places charge a convenience fee to offset that, um, and it looks like it's probably be cost beneficial to do for trucking tickets, and that would be the first place that we would start, because there are so many out of town residents, but, you know, you'll get that back in the report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A letter from Randall Lee regarding rerouting truck traffic from the Bartlett Street neighborhood.
Move, Madam Mayor, move the city manager with power.
Wait a minute, I think?
Uh, what's the address?
The Bartlett Street, um, that's private.
Yes.
Property, it's the B and M Railroad, so maybe to the planning board?
Okay.
So that they've got it in there, they're getting ready to do their master plan and, you know, maybe we ought to give it to, give it to them. I don't know what the city manager would do if it doesn't own them.
I think, I think that's a very good suggestion, is to refer that to the planning board, then we can utilize the staff resources of the planning department. It has come up before, it's actually been in the, the prior master plan of the city, and it could potentially be referred over to one of the subcommittees in the master planning process, so.
Why would we want?
Yeah, Ken, I recommend.
Counselor Pantolakis, would you like to, uh, change it?
Yes, I'm willing to change it, but I would, if we don't own the land, why would we send it to the planning board?
Uh, Bob?
Um, I suppose, Your Honor, just so that the planning board can make that determination, uh, and forward it back to the council with a list of the actual facts. We happen to know, in this case, it's owned by the railroad, but as a, as a general policy on how to deal with these things, the planning board is the board that's in a position to do it.
Okay, all right, very good.
Okay, move, just send it to the planning board.
Second.
The report back.
All right, uh, discussion, uh, Counselor Hines?
Um, this, uh, could very well be a fairly big item to deal with, and my recommendation would be to, uh, accept the letter and place it on file and refer a copy to the appropriate agencies. It works.
Does she want to make an amendment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, do you want to make an amendment?
I would like to amend that, please.
Okay, uh, do I get a second on the amendment? Okay, very good. Any discussion? Uh, Harold?
Talking on the amendment, uh, does that mean that, uh, as a matter of courtesy, the city manager will answer this letter and, and state just where the process is now? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? You all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're down to the city manager.
Did we vote on the amendment only?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're back to the, uh, original motion.
Original motion. Well, the motion as amended.
It was amended, so just take care of it.
Well, we could, uh, done it either way, voted on the amendment or, uh, voted on the main motion at our time, so.
Well, we ended up doing the same thing as I suggested.
Why don't we ask the city attorney to clarify it?
Did we do it right or should we?
I, I, I believe I agree with, uh, Counselor Whitehouse that it was a vote on amendment.
Right.
Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion. Would you like to hear the original motion, uh, Evy Wood?
Please.
Well, as amended.
As amended, as you write it.
The original motion was to refer to the planning board for review during the master plan process and report back, and the amendment to the motion was move to accept the letter and place it on file and refer a copy to the planning board.
Discussion, Evelyn?
Is that contradictory, Your Honor?
Yes.
Oh. So, what do we, what are we going to do?
Well, Your Honor, it is contradictory. Amendment, that's what the amendment did, had the effect of changing the direction that the council was going with this motion.
So what are we going to vote on, uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Whether, whether or not, as you now refer it to the city manager.
Why can't we revert that to my first motion that said refer it to the city manager with power and then amend it to say that he's gonna send the letter to the planning board and we answer this gentleman's question? I mean, we're going around circles over this.
There is currently a motion on the floor, seconded, ready to be voted upon. A yes vote will accomplish what Councilor Pantolakis just suggested. A no vote will leave the matter unresolved.
Okay. If we vote on the motion on the floor, we are not voting on a contradictory motion?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Uh, any other discussion, Counselor Hines?
I would think that if you have voted to accept the amendment, you would now vote the main question as amended, and that should be pretty clear.
I hate, I hate to sound like an-
Correct.
That's correct.
I hate to sound like an attorney, but if, if the amendment changes the intent of the original motion, you've got a problem. There's a contradiction there. Am I right, Mr. Sullivan?
Well, I think by definition, an amendment changes something, and, uh-
I knew that. I don't, I mean, I'm gonna support this and I want it to, you know, to be done properly. I don't want it to come back to hit us later on. That's my only reason for my questions. But if Mr. Sullivan, in his infinite wisdom, thinks it's okay, it's okay with me.
Does that mean you're hanging your shingle up or not?
Counselor St. Laurent?
Well, I'm gonna turn to the attorney, but what does a no vote do when this?
A no vote would leave this matter still in front of the city council.
That's right.
With the requirement that another motion be made in order to take some action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion before we take the vote here? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, all of that. Okay, now, let's see. Where am I? You're right, I'm, Your Honor, the city manager. Okay. Uh, did anyone, um, have any questions regarding, uh, Mr. Bohinko's informational items that perhaps Ted, yes, Ted?
Maybe for the benefit of the public, I'll point out what those items are and briefly read those.
Okay.
There are a couple of informational items tonight. Um, one is relative to the Portsmouth Maritime Folk Festival. Uh, the fourth annual Post, uh, Portsmouth Maritime Folk Festival will take place on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, and Sunday, September twenty-eighth, um, as part of our continuing efforts to bring energy and focus to the Central Business District, will be closing Pleasant Street from Ford Street to Market Square on Sunday, September twenty-eighth. Church Street from the square to the intersection at Ford Street will be closed, as well as Ford Street from Fleet Street to Church Street. The event begins at one and ends at six AM. Now, the other item is about the city's hazardous waste collection that will be taking place, uh, October eleventh from nine to one at, uh, Beverly Hill Road and, uh, at the DPW, um, garage, and, uh, I'll point out that residents do need to bring, uh, proof of residency when they do bring hazardous waste, not to, for the manager's section time.
I have one question, just before I came here tonight, I had a phone call, person has twelve partial cans of latex paint, and I believe latex is not a hazardous waste. What do they do? Can they put the cans?
What, what they, what they have to do basically is to let the paint dry out, to open it and let the latex paint dry, and then it can be thrown out in the river.
In the right, in a bag?
Yes.
Or set out so they know what's in it?
Regular trash.
Right, the, the instructions from Public Works, if they recall, would be exactly what, uh, Deputy City Manager just said. Once the contents have dried out, they can be placed in the trash bag.
Because they got very mad at me the last time I went over there, I had eight. They said, why didn't you just sit it out and let it dry? So, I don't mind listening. All right, now we're down to the, uh, what?
Informational number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, Harold.
Informational number two, which is, uh, a letter from Peter Henderson in reference to the Worth Lot being used as a parking garage. Would you please, uh, make copies and relay that to the EDC?
Mm-hmm.
For our upcoming Public Works session?
Right.
Very important.
Excuse me, Your Honor, did we have on the Maritime Folk Festival?
Uh, that wasn't a vote, it was just information.
Just information coming to us in the vote later on.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, everybody all set now for the mayor? I'll pass my gavel to the Assistant Mayor, and, uh, first of all, I would like to make a motion, uh, to move to accept one thousand dollars contribution from the Town of Lincoln, five thousand dollars from the Town of Tuffton Borough, and then I got a late one here that is on. Lincoln. That's it.
I'll second that, Madam-
I had another one, I wanted more money.
Madam Mayor, I'll second both, that motion.
Very good.
Can we finish with the, the last couple of words here where that money's going?
Uh, yes, uh, this goes into the Coalition of Community Funds for us to keep fighting the statewide property.
And do I hear a second?
I second that, yes.
And, any discussion? Ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, why don't you hold on to that because, uh, we're into, um, a vote to establish a work session regarding the Worth Lot.
You're, you're making the motion to?
I'd like to make the motion to set up a discussion.
Do I hear, and do you have a time?
Uh-
It says December eighth on my-
Yeah, but we were gonna discuss this.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, set up a work session, and do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Madam Mayor, since you're the maker of the motion, would you like to start off?
Well, I've had a few people come to me this evening, and they would like the, uh, work session done sometime in January after the new council is seated.
Makes sense. Yep. Uh, Counselor Pantolakis?
Yes, I would just like to make a comment about the EDC. Um, I, when I voted for this, I voted for a feasibility study. I didn't say I was gonna build a parking garage on Worth Lot, and that's all I've read for a week now that we're building a garage there, and I believe that that information telling us what, what it represents, well, how it could be built and whatnot, should come to us first before it goes to the newspaper.
Your Honor. And Counselor Hines?
The Economic Development Commission has been dealing with this subject for pretty close to a year. There's been studies done on it, uh, there've been diverse opinions on whether or not it should happen, but there's one opinion that is very solid, it can't happen without the council's vote.
Counselor Grassel?
Yes, I think part of the problem is that, or not part of it, it's, the fact is that the, um, reporters from the paper attend the meeting, and they listen to the discussion, and they publish what was discussed at the meeting, but in pub, in writing their articles, they neglect to say that this is all background information and preliminary, but I do, um, think that it was, um, that, that we should have gotten the information that the EDC got as to the background, uh, without getting all the repercussions from the public, because I too have had people speak to me about this, and they're not very happy about the way it's been going. I don't think it's anyone's fault, I think it's just the fact that the reporters were there and they wrote about what happened at the meeting.
Counselor Marconi?
Just a passing statement, now we know why they wouldn't consider the Worth Plaza for the new library.
Any further discussion? Are you ready for the, now, we said January was the recommendation?
Right, I'd like to set a time.
Okay.
Um, Kelly, when would be our first working January meeting?
I need to have a two thousand four schedule in front of me, but I did a, what I did was I've done a temporary schedule for two thousand four, and the first meeting, obviously, is the swearing in of all of the newly elected officials, and then there's a reception to follow, um, and then there was a second meeting, and I think the second meeting was January twenty-seventh, if I'm not mistaken, because of the holiday on January twenty-first.
Yes. Very good.
We could certainly come back with a proposed date at the next meeting if, if you'd like.
So the, the motion and the instructions are to hold a meeting in January, is that correct, Madam Mayor?
That's right, and I would just like to say, people, that is why we're having a work session, all right? So everybody can get together, the people, you people, and discuss this, because I think we're all taking lots of calls and lots of letters. January twenty-seventh's my birthday, huh? So that'll be a good one. It's on my birthday.
Are you recommending six o'clock on January twenty-seventh, or are you gonna have a free, an entire evening?
Uh, no, let's, uh, put it down for our work session, six o'clock.
Six o'clock on January twenty-seventh. Counselor St. Lawrence?
Well, I, I was, that was my question, was it gonna be prior to a city council meeting?
Yeah.
Was that gonna give us enough time, an hour? That's, there's a lot of, gonna be a lot of discussion on that.
I think this is preliminary. We don't have any information right now.
Right.
I think you're gonna ask for a lot more information.
Right, exactly. Okay, so the hour should be enough. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, if I remember correctly, you're talking about two thousand and six or something like that, so this is a long process.
You know, i- i- if I might suggest, um, I think you're right, Counsel, maybe an hour might not be enough time. What I, what I would recommend to the council is that we have an opportunity to sit with staff, um, take a look at the reports, see how long it would take to actually go through this feasibility analysis, try to see what sorts of questions would come up, um, certainly we wanna be contacting quarters and other people with immediate interest in that particular lot, that why don't we come back at the next council meeting with a recommendation to set the date to decide if it should be a longer meeting or an hour before a regular session.
Okay, long as the staff knows it's after January first.
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Of course, we could always set this work session up at a separate time, it doesn't have to be done the same night as the council meeting.
So, we get sworn in when?
I think it's January sixth, I, I don't have a two thousand four calendar in front of me.
So then the following Monday would be the thirteenth? Is it thirteenth?
Yeah, I-
Thirteenth, okay. Thirteenth, okay with everyone?
Do you have a two thousand four calendar?
I got one right here, so.
I think it's the last one on there.
Yeah. This is Monday?
And the nineteenth is, is, um-
A holiday.
Right, it's the twelfth, it'd be January twelfth. That work for everybody and, right now?
January twelfth?
We all may be as members of the general public, but January twelfth. Six thirty? Six thirty's the one we usually do our work sessions.
Once again, will that be prior to a city council meeting?
No.
It will not?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
So that could give you a couple hours.
Thank you.
And then if there's problems with the staff, you'll let us know. Okay, you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You ready for this back there?
Uh, yes. Uh, let's see what else we have here. I don't have any. No, I have a letter, I sent a letter, uh, to, uh, Westchester, uh, regarding, uh, the police officer that saved the life of a man at a local restaurant, and he performed the Heinle, I guess you'd say, Heinle.
Heinle.
You should know it too, Evy.
I know it very well.
Yes, and, uh, he, he just did an excellent job because everybody just collapsed around there, and he took right over. So I did send, uh, a letter to him, uh, with the city seal, it was really a nice letter from all of us, and then also, uh, to his chief of the police department, and this letter came in from, uh, the Department of Public Safety, so they were very pleased that the City of Portsmouth took the time to do that, and, uh, I got a call from the police officer, so, eh, that's really nice, and I'm, I'm very pleased that he, uh, he did it. I mean, because before me, and I don't think we'd be here. Uh, so, uh-
Just to elaborate, if I might, I wondered if people are aware that there is a device that can be used by an individual who happens to be alone, Father Heinle. It was invented by a man from the City of Portsmouth, it's about Y-Beg, and you can It's about ye big and you can hold it and put it there and push yourself against the wall and get the same effect that you would if someone was doing it to you and it saved many lives since its invention. I just thought I'd mention that.
That would be nice if each restaurant.
Well, I have one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
It's really, it's quite innovative because even a child can use it. It's small enough for a child to handle and be able to use and I'm just putting that off for informational purposes.
Last time I did one, when I was an auxiliary police officer, I did it on a pregnant woman and I just prayed to God, but she was fine, but I said never again. Now we're down to a request to place a placate, the burial site of the signer of the Declaration of Independence. What is your wish on that one?
Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to the city manager with power, but I'd like him also to consult with the cemetery committee and have them serve as a reference.
Second. Very good. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down two. Any miscellaneous and unfinished business? And Harold says he doesn't have any because he wants to get them for games. Right, Harold?
You're right, Your Honor.[1770.91]